I'd like to call the Monday, December 5th, 2022 Oakwood City Council meeting to order. Would you please rise and join me with the pledge of the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a roll call, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Here.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Thank you. For those of you watching at home, Vice Mayor Byington is zooming in as in accordance with our policies for somebody that can't be here in person. So we welcome you, Steve.
Thank you.
Do I have a report of the minutes of our November 7, 2022, regular session, work session, and executive session? Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. I have reviewed the minutes from all three of those meetings, and I found them correct and complete, and therefore I move that they be adopted as written.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 So ordered. We have no status reports this evening, and so this would be the time to go to the visitor's section of our meeting, and we have no visitors that wish to approach the dais right now. Is that correct? We have you later. Mr. Fr- No, later. Later for you. Okay, and so we will conclude the visitor's section of our meeting, and we will go straight to legislation, and Councilmember Turbin has an ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is an ordinance amending Section 151.03, which is titled "Disposal of Lost, Abandoned, Stolen, Seized, or Forfeited Property," and that's part of the Oakwood Administrative Code, and the purpose is to eliminate the 60-day holding period for certain types of property and to provide for online notification. And so this ordinance will update our procedures for handling certain kinds of abandoned property. It was introduced with a first reading on our November 7 meeting, and so this is the second reading of this ordinance, and so consequently I move that council adopt it tonight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments for Councilmember Turbin? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Thank you. Our next ordinance, Councilmember Stevens wishes to introduce.
Thank you, Mayor Duncan. This is an ordinance to approve current replacement pages to the Oakwood Traffic and General Offenses Codes. Each year, we pass an annual housekeeping ordinance to align our local traffic and general offenses ordinances with changes that have been made at the state level. This ordinance will adopt our 2022 replacement pages for the Traffic Code and General Offenses Code. This is also the second reading of this ordinance, and I move that council adopt it this evening.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, that's- I'm not doing that right. We need to do a roll call. I apologize.
Mayor Duncan?
Uh, yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
And now from afar, Vice Mayor Byington has an ordinance regarding our budget.
Okay, somebody raise your hand if my volume is too high. Okay. This is an ordinance to make appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Oakwood, State of Ohio during the fiscal year ending December 31, 2023. This is basically our annual budget ordinance, which appropriates the city's funding for 2023. This ordinance is required under Section 6.05 of the City Charter, and when adopted, provides formal authorization to the city manager to spend public dollars in providing city services. Our total city budget is divided into five primary parts with budgeted spending in each of the following: General City Services at a rate of $17,179,288; Refuge Services, $1,507,535; Water Services at $1,796,750; Sanitary Sewer Services at $2,407,741; and Stormwater Services at $1,607,525. City Manager will now make some comments on this budget.
Okay, we heard that barely. It started out fine, and it started fading, but we have a copy of the- his comments in front of us, so we were able to see that. So hopefully the folks at home can see it, but the most important part of his introduction is his introduction of our city manager. And you want to talk from here, correct?
I will speak from here, Your Honor, and I'll- because that was a little bit hard to understand there, I'll read the numbers again. As the Vice Mayor mentioned, our budget is broken up into five different sections. General City Services, the budget amount is $17,179,288. For our Refuge Services, $1,507,535. Water Services, $1,796,750. For Sanitary Sewer Services, $2,407,741. And for Stormwater Services, $1,607,525. But in addition to those numbers, there's about $6 million in the ord- listed in the ordinance as internal transfers. As you know, and as we've explained to the Budget Committee, those are dollars that we transfer within the fund or within the overall budget as part of the fund accounting that we apply here at the city. So it's not actually six additional million being spent. It's, again, just being transferred from within the funds. So I wanted to make a few quick comments. First and foremost, the 2023 budget includes holding our municipal income tax and our property tax for city services, and that includes two voted property tax levies, both on a five-year cycle. Why it holds both of those as they are today, in other words, there'll be no new taxes, no additional taxes paid by our property owners in 2023 for this budget. Likewise, the budget does not reflect any increases in fees, which is primarily refuse, water, sanitary sewer, and storm water. Every property owner in Oakwood receives a bill once a month with all four of those fees on there, and the rates that we charge for those services remain unchanged in 2023. Our year-end balances in the five categories of funds are within the range of what we consider healthy for our city, so we're going into 2023 in good shape financially, and based on the expenses included in the budget, we project that we'll end 2023 in pretty good shape. We did share with the Budget Committee that we'll- while we look at our fees for service every year, we do anticipate that probably next spring, we'll need to talk a little bit about potential fee increases in a couple of the other categories for 2024, but again, nothing in 2023. I mentioned the Budget Committee. Our Vice Chair, Bill Frappel, will speak here in a few moments, but we had four good meetings with the committee this year, as we typically do, one in the springtime in May, and then we had three this fall. The May one was more of a- an overview of year-to-date finances and projects up to that point in the year, and the ones in the fall were focused more on the upcoming budget. We highlighted with the Budget Committee some things that took place here in the city, and I'll just share these very- this year, and I'll share these very quickly. While it may seem somewhat minor, we completed a significant upgrade or improvement to the tennis courts at Orchardly Park, excuse me, and as part of that improvement, we converted one of the courts to a pickleball court, and this is the first pickleball court we have in Oakwood. And while there are only two actual courts there, it's been very well-received, and we've not received any complaints from the neighborhood about different type of noise or anything like that. So we're real pleased with that project. The Gardner Pool Project started about two months ago, two and a half months ago, and is well underway. It's a- probably at the end of the day, it'll be about a $350,000 major improvement to that wonderful community offering. We've run that pool for roughly 50 years, and year after year, if you look at the membership numbers as printed in our annual report, they're stable. In other words, our community embraces that public community pool, and this will be a major improvement. And kudos to Carol and Karen Early on her staff, and Chris Kuzma, our staff engineer for their work in overseeing this project. It'll- we're assured that it'll- the work will be completed by next spring and by Memorial Day, which seems like forever from now. That pool will be opened with a beautiful new deck and new stands for the lifeguards, new standards for- or structures for the diving boards, and a few other amenities. So a neat improvement there. The Oakwood Scene Newsletter that we all received just the other day has an article in there about a major project to convert streetlights, about 500 of them, the lion's share of our residential streetlights in Oakwood, from the high-pressure sodium fixture to the LED. And so that's a neat project that we expect will- we don't have exact dates yet, but probably take place in the second or maybe third or fourth quarters of next year. The work along Far Hills continues. We've all seen the major gas line project underway this year, very significant and very important. Doug Spitler, who's here tonight assures me that by the upcoming holiday, they should be all wrapped up. I think that's still the case. So there's still a little bit of work going on now, but it's nearly completed. And then we've got- just about ready to go out to bid on some significant curb replacement work, stormwater inlet work along Far Hills, and basically prepping all the infrastructure there for an asphalt resurfacing project that is scheduled to take place in 2024. And then finally, at our last meeting, in terms of highlights, you acknowledged our 2004 comprehensive plan is still being valid for the community, and that's posted to our website, as well as a whole array of written achievements towards the goals and objectives of that. And so we're real pleased to have completed that project. Real quickly, in terms of highlights for 2023, we anticipate that the Kettering Health Network will make an announcement on plans for the 2,600 Far Hills Avenue building. That's the building they own, a three-story brick building just north of Dorothy Lane Market. Jennifer Wilder, who's here tonight, is in regular touch with her counterparts at Kettering Health Network, and while we have no dates or any details of the- of a project, we're told that it's coming. So we're hopeful that that will at least begin in 2023. There are two remaining commercial properties at the Sugar Camp property, one in the northeast corner and one on the far west side, and we'll continue to work with the Oakland Investment Group folks on seeing about developing those properties. During the second half of this year, we worked with an outside engineering consultant to build a computer model, hydraulic model of our water system, and we'll be receiving the report from that and the actual model itself here very soon, and part of the report will include recommendations on long-term capital improvements to be made to our water system. As you know, a lot of the areas of Oakwood were developed nearly 100 years ago, some a little bit more than 100 years ago, and so that underground infrastructure will need attention, and it'll be a multi-year sort of project, and this report and study that was completed will help us to develop that. Likewise, we're going to put a concerted effort within the Public Works Department in 2023 in reviewing our underground sanitary sewer system. It too, like the water system, is aging, and as you know, and as we shared with the Budget Committee, we have about $100,000 in the 2023 budget to buy a camera that will help us to investigate and explore the underground sanitary sewer system. As I've talked before, we are partway through a major study analyzing our traffic signal system, and we expect a preliminary report or a draft report of that study in late January. And I anticipate that staff will then carefully review the report and, you know, work to finalize it, so probably by the end of the first quarter or early second quarter, we'll be ready to talk about some master planning in terms of the traffic signal system upgrades. And then we're also looking at some improvements to our parks. Our three major parks, Far Ridge, Schaefer, and Orchardly are aging. Schaefer and Far Ridge were last improved in the 1990s, and Orchardly Park in 2008. One of the two play structures at Orchardly was, in fact, an older structure that we moved from another park, and that is planned for replacement in 2023 at the cost of $50,000. But there are some other improvements to the other parks that we're going to start programming in future years. So there's a common theme here, and it's infrastructure, and that's a common theme nationally, and so I think it all fits together, and we'll be focusing, again, in 2023, a lot of attention on that. So those are my comments on the budget. If you'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Any questions for us, either?
I'll turn it back over to Vice Mayor Byington for your comments.
Yes, Your Honor, we have a citizen budget review committee that consists of 32 members and is represented by residents from each of our eight voting precincts. That, as was mentioned by Norb, that committee met four times this year, and at its November 29 meeting, voted to endorse this particular budget. We're fortunate to have BRC Vice Chair Bill Frappel here this evening to make some comments on the endorsement. So, Bill, if you're there, step up to the mic.
Welcome, Bill. This is your big chance. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm here in place of Mr. Dickerson, who was unable to be here. Mr. Klopsch and Mr. Byington have basically said everything I was going to say. Very briefly, as has been said, we had several meetings. Many of the members attended in person, which is good. Several members attended by Zoom, and that was good also, but there are more people coming to the meetings. Norbert and his very capable staff did an excellent job of presenting to the members of the committee where the money's coming from into the city, and Norbert did an excellent job of showing where the money's proposed to go out of the city. The questions were few. I think everybody does an excellent job of informing the committee members, and I think at the end of the day, everybody voted unanimously to recommend the approval of the budget as presented to us to you as the city council.
Okay.
And the most important thing, as Norbert said, no new taxes.
There he goes.
That made everybody on the committee very happy. Thank you.
Thank you, and again, on behalf of the council, we appreciate all the work that BRC does for us, and not only just in reviewing the numbers, but we get a lot of good input from that committee on other things that the city has done. For example, the idea to put the recycling facility next to the Public Works Building, that came from a BRC member. You know, council had- staff had another place to want to put it, which would have been a terrible- would have been a terrible location, but, you know, we really appreciate the input we get from ours.
Let me add one thing. I would say, of the years I've been on this committee, I can honestly say that there's a lot of talented people that are willing to give their time to come to these meetings and listen, ask questions, make comments, think about things, and then give their vote. So I think everybody here can be very comfortable and satisfied that you have good people on this committee.
Okay. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. And we will have maybe several openings on our BRC here come up in January, so council's going to meet and talk about those replacements. We'll do that, you know, next month or next year. I'll turn it back to you, Vice Mayor Byington, for your motion. Nope, we can't hear you. Okay, your sound went dead on us, so your concurrence, you know, we can't hear you at all. Can you hear us? Yeah, we can't. We've lost him. I mean, I see his face, but I see him.
Make the motion.
Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make the motion under Section 3.04 of the City Charter. This ordinance will take effect upon its passage, and move that the council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please, Lori?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
That was a yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Okay. Do we have Steve's volume back or audio back?
It might be on his end.
I have it turned up all the way in here, so I'm not sure.
Okay. Can you hear us? He can hear us. Okay. Well, I'll go ahead and make your introductory motions for your next ordinance that you had. It's an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 4948 and establish an amended personnel schedule dated December 5, 2022, and declare an emergency. This is an ordinance to update the city's personnel schedule for all non-bargaining unit employees except temporary seasonal employees. The updated schedule authorizes pay increases of 2.95% in 2023. These are responsible increases for our non-union employees that are consistent with the raises authorized by our current collective bargaining agreements for union employees. Pay for temporary seasonal employees has also been increased to ensure these pensions positions remain competitive for job marketplace. This ordinance is being introduced as an emergency measure to ensure that it takes effect as of the first pay period of 2023, which begins on December 19, 2022. So I move council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the above ordinance, and do we have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments for me? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington? Mr. Stevens?
The records show that was a yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
And then I will also introduce another ordinance to set the maximum compensation by- of the Oakwood Municipal Court Clerk, Deputy Clerk of Court, and Bailiff, and to declare an emergency. By law, the Oakwood Municipal Judge determines the actual salary for each court employee, but the city council is responsible for setting the maximum amount to be paid for each job classification within the court. This ordinance will increase the maximum compensation for all court employee job classifications by 2.95%, consistent with increases for union and non-bargaining unit employees. I move council adopt this as an emergency measure, as an emergency ordinance, so that these pay increases will be effective, consistent with the timing of the pay increases given to office and management staff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
The records show that was a yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
And then I have Mayor Byington's last ordinance. It's to establish an amendment to the organization and staffing schedule for the purpose of creating the classification of Assistant Water Plant Superintendent, eliminating the water plant technician classification, amending the number of authorized positions for the water and sewer technical classifications from one to two, amending the number of authorized positions for the general service worker classification from 13 to 14, clarifying titles for other classifications, and declaring an emergency. This is an ordinance to update our organization and staffing schedule, so it reflects the city's current staffing needs. I move the council adopt this ordinance tonight as an emergency measure for the reasons stated in the ordinance. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
The records show that was a yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Thank you. And then our last item of legislation tonight, Councilmember Turbin has an ordinance.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This is an ordinance authorizing the renewal of a land lease agreement with the Enterprise Roofing and Sheet Metal Company, Inc., and Irving Commons Association. The City of Oakwood owns some land in the City of Dayton as part of its well field and water distribution system. Part of that land, which is approximately 1/3 of an acre located just off of Irving Avenue, is adjacent to the Enterprise Roofing's corporate headquarters and a condominium building known as Irving Commons. They have leased it from the City of Oakwood for many years as part of their shared parking area. Oakwood has some underground infrastructure there, but nothing above ground. The lease has expired, and this ordinance will authorize the city manager to renew it on a substantially similar term as the previous lease. And I do move that council waive the second reading and adopt this ordinance tonight.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions for Councilmember Turbin? Hearing none. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mayor Duncan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Byington?
The records show that was also a yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Mrs. Hilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Turbin?
Yes.
Thank you. That concludes our legislation. We have a really neat Oakwood moment tonight, and Councilmember Hilton wishes to talk about this.
Thank you, Your Honor. You all probably saw a nice picture in the Oakwood Register on November 16 of the graduates of the Citizen Police Academy. This is the fifth year that the academy has been in place. I had a nice talk with Lieutenant Chuck Belage, who is the academy coordinator, and he said Chief Hill had this idea even before he was Chief Hill, and so began a little over five years to put it together. There've been some five classes, as I said, 12 each year, and then even during the worst of COVID, they continued with the class, just had fewer students, I think 10 instead of 12. And my understanding from Lieutenant Belage is the officers who teach the program, it's all volunteer time. They come up with their own curriculum. It goes on for 10 weeks, and he also told me that the curriculum changes, not just from year to year, but even from week to week. They have a survey that goes to the students each week, and then just based on things that are changing in the world, such as when our safety officers got the body cams, you know, that then became part of what the students were learning about. So anyway, I had a chance to go to the graduation on November 9, and it was really neat. There were, well, all these people in the picture, but then there were, I counted at least seven alums from previous classes. And another feature that you'll see on the agenda there, the program, is that Chief Hill then talked about the Alumni Association, and now with, let's see, 48 minus two, 46 alums. That's a pretty good number of people. And he had some examples of things that they might, you know, continue to be involved in or start to get involved in as a group or as graduates. One was the delivery of the free Thanksgiving meals that the FOP and Rotary did just this past November 23, and there were some other ideas as well. But anyway, it's a really neat program, and I know at least a few in every class, and people just rave. There's this one good friend I have, and she, every time I see her, I mean, she was in the second class, and she does not stop talking about it. So it's really neat, and I'm really proud of Chief Hill and his whole staff. So thank you for doing that.
Thank you very much. I know when he first presented this idea to council, we thought, well, we'll try it one year. well, we'll try it one year, and then maybe nobody will want to do it again. And now it's one of the neatest things going. And if you want to participate next year, you need to get your resume in quick. It might be already filled. It's, it's half full now. So if you have an interest in doing this, time is of the essence. So we really appreciate it. It's a great way to have our public safety officers have engagement with the community. And we've heard nothing but outstanding reports, and I believe Vice Mayor Byington's spouse participated this year. Is that correct? Yes. All right. And I know she enjoyed it very much as well. We will now go to our City Manager Report.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm just going to say a few quick thank yous, being the last meeting of the year. First, I'll start with Carol. I mentioned the Gardner Pool Project, which is really a big deal, right there in her backyard. Her office overlooks the swimming pool, and it's a, looks like a disaster area now, but just lots to think about and lots to do on that. And we continue to have a wonderful, you know, small but powerful and mighty community center here in Oakwood, and the, the number of programs that, that Carol and her staff come up with every year is really impressive. Thank you for approving the budget. You know, Cindy Stafford is here tonight, and Cindy does the lion's share of the work, as you well know, for the budget, and not only preparing it and all, but then managing throughout the year all of our, you know, revenue receiving and the expenses. So thank you for all that. And then, of course, we've talked about the Otter State Awards that we receive, and that's primarily because of Cindy. Doug Spitler is here tonight, and, you know, Doug, we, if you look at our roughly 100-person staff, you can break it up into three groups: public safety, public works, and all other. And so public works is about a third of our employees, and they're the folks that do all the work out in the field, day in and day out. And, you know, just coming off the leaf collection, I'm saying coming off of it, we're not quite done, but we've got the majority of it. Just an enormous task, and so thank you, Doug, for all you do there. We talked about Chief Hill. We, we all know we have the finest public safety department around, and the academy likewise, as Mrs. Hilton explained, I, all I hear is positive about everyone that's participated. And three of us are in the Oakwood Rotary Club, and there are four of us here, and, and I think the group most represented in the CPA is the Oakwood Rotary Club. I haven't counted up, but I think we probably have eight or 10 Rotarians that have gone through it, and, and all I hear is, again, is wonderful reports. Jennifer Wilder, Personnel and Properties, it's an amazing combination of responsibilities and keeping track of all the HR stuff for even a smaller organization like ours, 100 people. And then seasonals and some permanent part-time is, is an enormous task, and Jennifer does a great job with that. Chris Kuzma, our, you know, newest key, key employee here, our staff engineer, is doing a fabulous job. I, I spoke about all the infrastructure work, and really, at the end of the day, it's Chris's job to, to really manage all that we do in terms of long-range master planning. And I'll end with my, my partner to my right here, Rob Jacks. I, as I've talked to you before, very happy and excited about the comprehensive plan and all that that entails, and, you know, a lot of, of what goes into that and how we use it is directly related to, to our city attorney. And Rob just does a great job, he did a great job with that, and really, any, any task that finds its way to his desk, he just excels at. So I'm, I'm very blessed, and just wanted to say that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for our city manager? All right. If not, we will then go to council comments. Councilmember Turbin?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, last Saturday, Oakwood celebrated its fourth annual holiday home tour, and it was sponsored by, of course, the Oakwood Historical Society. And it was a great day. The weather was fabulous, the homes were beautiful, and the history was really, really fun. But none of it would have been possible without the generous, gracious homeowners who opened their doors to total strangers. I can't think of a more welcoming gesture than opening up your doors, and I hope that resonates with not only the people of Oakwood, but also for anyone passing through Oakwood. And so with that, I'd like to wish everybody a happy, healthy, and a safe holiday.
Thank you. Councilmember Hilton?
Yes, I'd just like to remind everybody, and I'm glad Carol Collins is here, because I might not get the times right, but Sunday is the Holiday of Lights celebration, so there'll be luminaries out, put out by the beautification committee as well as residents. And at Schaefer Park are the festivities starting at 6:30, going till about 8:00, and the mayor will talk, and there'll be hot chocolate and, and popcorn and music. Lots of great holiday music.
Popcorn is very good. Councilmember Stevens?
Just real quick, I want to thank, since they're all here, I want to thank on behalf of council all the department heads, you know, and please send that thank you to all your employees. It doesn't need to be one-on-one, but if you want to send an email out and just sign it from council that we really appreciate all you do, you know, Norb sends us emails all the time. We get reports. We see every, we know what happens in our city, and, and majority of it is positive. And it's all because of the department heads and their great staff. And we just want to thank you for all you did this past year, and we look forward to more success in the future. And finally, I just want to wish everyone happy holidays and enjoy your time with your friends and your family.
Is Vice Mayor Byington's audio back? Nope, he doesn't know sign language either, I don't think. But we will gladly grant you additional time for the next month's meeting for you, if you have any final comments, and we appreciate you, you know, zooming in to us tonight. I would like to echo some of the comments that others have said. I've, I've always said here that the reason that I wanted to get involved with the city of Oakwood is it was well governed and it was well managed, it was financially strong. Clearly, the, the five of us on council, many of us have served for numerous years. We have no hidden agendas. We always care about what's best for the citizens of Oakwood, and I think that's totally apparent, that we do a very good job governing this city, if I may say so myself. But clearly, well managed makes it easier to be well governed, and I appreciate your efforts on behalf of our city, as well as all the staff, direct reports that are here, and we've already sang their praises, and I will go into a lot more detail about that at my State of the City address in February. And then financially strong, the fact that, you know, we, we have a, you know, a balanced budget. Again, we had a surplus. We raised no new taxes, no new fees. That's evidence of sound fiscal management from both the City Council and city staff, and the citizens should be thankful during this year. Thanks for our great city, still the best city to live in, in the entire state of Ohio, because they haven't had a new vote yet. So I'm still holding on to that. I'm sticking to it. Our, our next meeting is going to be on Monday, January 9th, and Ohio State might be in the national championship. What do you think? We'll see. Or it could be Georgia. But we will adjourn till January 9th for, for this meeting. I would like for you to stay here just for a brief second. We have a Community Improvement Organization annual meeting, and I will open that up here as soon as I adjourn this one, and we are adjourned. So now I will call to order our Community Improvement Corporation Annual Trustee and Organization Meeting, and Lori, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Duncan?
Here.
Mr. Byington?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Mrs. Hilton?
Here.
Mrs. Turbin?
Here.
Mr. Klopsch?
And as far as our organization meeting, the only item we have is to approve the minutes from our last meeting, December 13, 2021. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Your Honor, I've reviewed those minutes, and they are correct and complete, and I move that they be adopted as written.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, Signify, are saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And we have no old business, and we have no new business, so I move that we adjourn. Thank you.